So how do we want to handle that? He's going to read it. Do I need to present it or?
Gary. Are you going to, oh, what's the plan for this? What's the plan for this?
So I've got a citation.
Okay.
A little bit about the situation. I was going to call him up. Tell story. Your resignation. You've got one from the fire department.
So after yours, then you can ask us to come up. Or the mayor to come up.
Okay. Probably good for both you and, and then I'll, and I've got a coin here.
So our resignation and then I'll just call it.
Okay.
Good evening. The workshop council meeting for the city of Coppers Cove, Texas, held July 18th, 2023 is called to order at 5:02 PM. Madam Secretary, please call and roll.
Mayor Yancey.
Here.
Joanne Cortland.
Here.
Fred Chavez.
Here.
Sean Alzona.
Here.
John Hale.
Here.
Manuel Montanez.
Here.
Vanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
Everyone is here. Item C announcements. Ms. Cortland?
Yes, I wanted to announce on the 5th of August, Operation Stand Down Central Texas is having their first annual Vet Fest out at the city park. The event is free. It'll be $5 for parking. There's going to be tons of vendors, food trucks, as well as veteran entertainment to celebrate our veterans in this community. The event is from 10 until 5.
I have nothing, sir.
Okay. Sean? Ryan?
Yes, sir. Next week, July 25th and July 27th, we are having special city council workshops and meetings. This is related to property tax values and tax rates.
John?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Vanya?
Nothing.
Jake?
I don't have anything at this time.
All right. We move to item D, public recognition.
Recognition of a citizen for life-saving action. Gary Young, Fire Chief.
I come before you this evening to bestow a significant award to an individual for a life-saving measure that they have done in our community. On the morning of May 19th, 2023, at approximately 6:50 AM, a citizen of our Coppers Cove community experienced a collapse in their driveway. While a family member was assessing the situation, another citizen was traveling to work and saw the commotion in the driveway. The citizen who was traveling by stopped, stopped and quickly assessed the person and identified that the person was unconscious, had no pulse, and was experiencing their last breaths. The citizen, Alberto Botello, recognized that cardiopulmonary resuscitation, or CPR, was needed. Mr. Botella immediately began providing CPR to the person and directed the family member to call for EMS. A little more than three minutes later, EMS arrived and found Mr. Botella performing CPR. They exchanged information about the patient and then EMS took over CPR. The paramedic wrote in their report, arrived on scene to find a bystander performing high-quality compressions. EMS provided further life-saving measures, including rapid defibrillation and medication administration. Soon after those treatments, the patient's heart began beating again. Our staff recognized that Mr. Botella's life-saving efforts contributed to a positive outcome for the citizen of our community. And after a short hospital stay, the citizen returned home and is doing well today. So, Mr. Botella, would you please come forward? Several of the, I believe some of the folks that were on this call are actually in the audience today. Is that right? Some of y'all were there? I know that one of them is actually on duty.
Mr. Botella, on behalf of the Coppers Cove Fire Department, I would like to provide you this life-saving honor. It says it is presented to Albert Botella in recognition of life-saving and saving the life of a person who experienced a cardiac arrest on May 19th, 2023, conferred this 18th day of July, 2023. Tell you what, if we'll move over there.
Yes, have a certificate of appreciation. Grateful recognition of your life-saving actions towards a citizen of Coppers Cove. We hereby present Alberto Botello, excuse me, with this certificate of appreciation for the heroic action taken on May 19th, 2023. Mr. Botella, excuse me, performed life-saving CPR on a citizen that collapsed from cardiac arrest. Mr. Botella's call to duty is commendable and embodies selfless service. The city of Coppers Cove, the citizens of Coppers Cove are fortunate to have Mr. Botella in our community. Signed by Ryan Haverlaw, City Manager, and myself, Dan Yancey as mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Botella, for being the conscientious citizen that you are. We all learn from what you, what you did for citizens of Coppers Cove. We move now to item D two.
Recognition of Charter Review Committee members. Ryan Haverlaw, City Manager.
Mayor, City Council, we have the opportunity every two years to review our charter and potentially make amendments to that charter. City councils in the past, and you as city council, made the decision this year to appoint a number of individuals to a committee to review the city's charter. And in reviewing that city's charter, those individuals then eventually make recommendations to the council for amendments to the charter. And just for some history on what charter reviews can do or allowed to do, any city that is over 5,000 may become a home rule city. And as being a home rule city, then a charter is developed, written, and then eventually adopted by the voters of that community or that city. And so Coppers Cove has had a charter ever since its inception. And last year, city council made the decision, we're going to review the charter again, and we're going to be ready to potentially adopt and take to the voters amendments to the city's charter. City council appointed several members to that committee. And this, during this workshop right now, not only are we going to review those amendments, proposals that that committee has developed to introduce to council and potentially be put on the ballot, but we're going to recognize those committee members. And so I'm going to call those committee members' names, Mayor, if you don't mind coming up, so that you can give them their certificate and take a picture by our awesome public relations director, Kevin Keller. And so our first committee member is Mr. Fred Chavez, who was voted as the chairperson for the Charter Review Committee. Yeah, you got to run though, sir. It's like Price is Right. We also have Mr. Howard Hawk, who is the vice chair. Our other city council representative, Sean Alzona. We're going to have to work on that. Mr. Lynn Blair. Ms. Mary Derrick. Oh, there she is. Mrs. Dawn Hill. Mrs. Rita Hogan. I didn't see Rita. No, she's not here. Mrs. Lynette Sal. Mr. Dell Tredway. Wow, he missed a meeting. Mr. Dennis Webster. While Dennis is receiving his certificate, council and mayor, this committee took only three meetings to review the entire charter. They were very effective, very efficient, and that's including having conversations with our city attorney, who's a lawyer. Mr. Zach, we still love you. But they have brought the charter amendments that we're going to review with you next. So, Mr. Mayor, this concludes our presentations.
We now move to item E, workshop items.
Discussion and direction on proposed amendments to the city's home rule charter. Ryan Haverlaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Osborne. Mayor and council, as I just stated, our Charter Review Committee that you established and you appointed citizen members to and two members of the council to, met three times this year and reviewed the entire charter. As a result of that review and the numerous discussions that occurred during those review meetings, there were five measures and proposals, propositions, excuse me, that were presented. They are labeled from measure A to measure E, and so we are going to review those. As I am reviewing them, by all means, please interrupt, interject, comments, questions, decisions. Our Charter Review Committee members, as you saw, are here, and they can respond to any specific questions you had in regards to the purpose of any of these measures and propositions. So measure A specifically deals with section 2.06 of the charter, compensation of council members and mayors. And as you can see in your background information, it changes the compensation for the mayor from $50 to $100 and changes the composition, compensation for council members from $25 to $75. What is important to note is that this is for regular and specially called meetings only. So for every regular meeting that is called, it is, the council members and the mayor are compensated for their attendance to that meeting. And if there are special workshops that are called or conducted, those meetings are also compensated based on the fact that you as council members and mayors are attending those meetings. I will point out that many cities have such compensation for their mayor and council members. Some compensation is actually much higher because it entails more of a salary type of opportunity. But as you can see in the proposition, it is very specific that it changes mayor from $50 to $100 per meeting and council members from $25 to $75 per meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns about that proposition? Measure B deals with several sections of the city charter in its section 2.08, Prohibitions, section 3.15. Section 3.18, Failure of Counselor to Call a Recall Election, Section 9.01, which is Power to Tax. And all of those sections are stricken, as you can tell in your background information. The proposition language states, shall the city charter of the city of Coppers Cove be amended by striking all provisions which are inconsistent with state law? And so just based on that question, it is clear that those sections in our charter are no longer consistent with state law. And so they are being stricken out. This was reviewed with our city attorney, who verified to the committee that these provisions of the charter are inconsistent with state law. Any questions or concerns with Measure B? Okay. Measure C. Measure C specifically adds a language to Section 5.01, which is the section for the city attorney, and details or summarizes the requirements of the city attorney and that the council must appoint that city attorney, but it adds a last sentence which states, "The city attorney shall review all contracts as to legal sufficiency prior to their approval and execution." The proposition language, which would be on the ballot, states, "Shall the city charter of the city of Coppers Cove be amended to require the city attorney to review all contracts as to form prior to their approval and execution?" So this is important. In the last five years, everything, every contract that we've reviewed, we've looked at, has gone through the city attorney's office. However, by putting it in the city charter, it is a requirement, which means that anytime a contract is brought before council, it would specifically state in that agenda item that, in compliance with city charter, it's been reviewed by the city attorney and approved to form, as the proposition states. One thing it does not state, just for complete clarification, the city attorney is not reviewing that contract for policy decisions. So the form of that contract is important for legal basis, for defense of that contract, for the city's liability, those things. Policy decisions are like, as an example, City Council, in the last few months, recently approved a new lease agreement for a cell tower. And the amounts that are in that agreement are policy decisions. And so the city attorney would not say, no, you can't put $10 in there, you have to put $1,000 in there. No, that's a policy decision, which is council's decision on what those are. So any questions about Proposition C? Measure D strikes out a number of different sections. Section 6.02.1, which is amending the operating budget. Section 6.02.2, transfers of appropriations. 6.3, which is preparation and submission of the capital improvement plan and its subsection of amending it. 6.04, preparation and submission of the capital outlay plan and its subsection. And then 6.05, preparation and submission of the personnel plan and its subsection. These are being stricken, recommended to be stricken from the charter and replaced with a sentence that is there on lines 27 and 28, "The city's operating budget shall be amended as provided for in state law," and the rules and policies adopted by City Council. Last year, City Council adopted the financial governance policy. Prior to adopting the financial governance policy, City Council has adopted a financial policy. A governance policy, financial governance policy, actually takes it a step beyond just policy and identifies not only specific goals, but certain procedures as well. And so our budget director and our finance director prepared the financial governance policy, something that City Council approved last year. The portions within that policy not only include certain parts of the language that is being stricken, recommended to be stricken from the city charter, but it would then need to be amended, should this be approved by the voters, to include additional language on amending the operating budget and amending the capital improvement, capital outlay, and personnel improvement plans. The committee overall voted to recommend this to City Council. It was not a unanimous vote, with some reservations of removing the language for these. And so the committee members can definitely speak to their reservations. But the intent and goal of this is that it removes procedural policy-type things out of the charter and puts that in the responsibility of the council, so that you, as the council, are then setting those policies and those procedures identified in that financial governance policy. Any questions, concerns, comments on that? Moving to Measure E, there are a number of changes here. I'll kind of walk us through those. But it starts us off with Section 10.02 of the Charter, Power to Grant Franchise. It adds some additional language, "To the extent authorized by law, no franchise shall be granted, renewed, or extended for an indeterminate period or for a term of more than 20 years." One of the reasons that was added is because state law changed. And it did not give the cities the power to say, "No franchises." So it had to revise to the extent of state law. It removes Section 10.03, which is ordinance granting franchise; 10.04, grant not to be exclusive; 10.05, transfer franchise; 10.06, franchise value not to be allowed; 10.07, right of regulation; 10.08, regulation of rates; and 10.09, which is a reserve section, just removing that section. Again, the proposition states that, "Shall Article 10 of the city charter of the city of Coppers Cove, related to public utility franchises, be amended to be consistent with state law." Again, the reason that is necessary is because state law has changed over the last several years, and there are state franchise laws that public utilities are going by, whereas they do not... The city's charter says you have to go by the city's charter, but the state has now created franchise license or laws that those public utilities can go by. Any questions about Proposition E?
Any questions?
Okay. So with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes the measures and the proposals for the city charter from the City Charter Committee. And the City Council will have the opportunity to put this on the ballot in November of 2023. That will occur in August of this year, when you will be required to call that election. And this will be a special election to amend the city charter. Right now, we have it planned for August 1st, for City Council to take action, to put it on the November ballot. With that being said, Mayor and Council, since our committee members are here, just wanted to see if any committee members wanted to express their opinion on any of these propositions to council. Okay?
Fred. Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Haverlaw. First, I want to thank all the committee members that are here and that participated in this, even Shawn. I think it's important to let everybody know that the eye that we went forward with this was to make it as lean and only put things that are necessary in there, not clouding it with things that are superfluous or things that we're not going to enforce. We were looking at good governance. And the people that were on this committee were hawks. They were on top of it. And they made sure that we were watching what we did and how we did it. So thank you. The other thing is that, thanks for letting us sit on there or shanghaing me. As I said, we wanted to try and do as much as we could to alleviate things that were not necessary. And that's the mandate that we went forward with. The goal is not to try and be freewheeling. The goal is to make it that the governance is as simple as possible and it flows smoothly as possible. These people did their job. They made my job easy. Thank you.
Mayor, this also wouldn't be possible without our city attorney, who not only was an expert in city charters, but drafted all of these. So, Mr. Zek, is there any comments or additions that you would like to add?
No, you did a great job presenting it.
Thank you, Mr. Zek. Mayor, that concludes our discussion.
Question?
Not a question. I'd just also like to thank all of you guys that were on the committee and brought this to us. I know it's a lot of work to go through that charter, and appreciate all your hard work on that.
I'd like to thank the two council members for volunteering. I do appreciate that.
I thought they were here that day.
Yeah, they were both of them.
They were like, no, they're the ones.
That's what happens, make sure you're here. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you, Ryan, for presenting that. There are no other items to be discussed today, so the time is 5:27. We stand adjourned. The regular council meeting will begin at 6 o'clock.
Good evening. The regular council meeting for the city of Coppers Cove, held July 18, 2023, is called to order at 6:01 PM. Madam Secretary, please, or excuse me, called to order, let's stand for the invocation by, given by Councilman Chavez, and then followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here today safely. Dear Lord, watch over all of our council people as we make the, our decisions in the best interest of all the people of Coppers Cove. Also, Lord, watch over all our city workers, our first responders, and all our brave young men and women, women serving abroad and here to keep us safe and free. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please show me the pledge for our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the state flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey.
Here.
Joanne Cortland.
Here.
Fred Chavez.
Here.
Sean Alzona.
Here.
John Hale.
Here.
Manuel Montanez.
Here.
Vanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here. Everyone is here today. We move to item D announcements. Cortland?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would like to invite all the citizens of Coppers Cove on the 5th of August to come out to the city park from 10 to 5. Operation Stand Down Central Texas will be having their first annual Vet Fest to celebrate our veterans in the central Texas community. There's going to be a lot of vendors, food trucks, veteran entertainment, as well as the Exchange Club is doing a cornhole tournament, 32-team, single elimination, win or take all tournament on field two. Thank you.
What are they going to take?
They actually will win a custom cornhole set.
Cool.
That was done with American flag and the Vet Fest and Exchange Club logo, so.
Great.
I have nothing, sir.
Sean?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ryan?
Yes, sir. Next week, July 25th and July 27th, we'll be holding special city council workshops and meetings that relate to property tax values and tax rates.
Thank you. Mr. Hale?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Mutton?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Hart?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Nothing.
All right. We move to item E, Citizens Forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section pursuant to 551042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Any deliberation or discussion about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
All right. Is there anyone to speak during Citizens Forum?
My name is Keith. I'm from Texas Street. And I'll be talking about property taxes. No, I'm not against them. Not against them. I think that, but I'm, what I'm going to be talking about is if the federal government taxed people on unrealized gains, the GOP would protest vehemently about this one day. Yeah, I'm going to tax you on money you haven't received yet, but maybe you should have. You got a fu, you got a master's degree and 10 years' experience. You should be making $300,000 a year. So, I'm going to tax you on $300,000 a year because that's what you're worth. That's unrealized gains. That's what property taxes do. They tax people on unrealized gains. I don't plan on selling my house. So what good is the value of my house going up? You get the, you get the sales tax from it, right? Right? 5% commission. So what's, where's the value in my value going up? I don't plan on selling. I re, I, I receive nothing when the value of my house goes up unless I sell it, which I think is the primary motivation here. The government will tax that money too, which provides them an incentive to keep raising the value of my house. They profit from the va, higher property taxes and sales tax. It's like taxing people on the income they should or could get. At least with investments, dividends and capital gains gets reinvested, and I get more shares from my potential growth. Not only that, but if I make an improvement to my house, how dare you improve your life? We're going to tax you more. That doesn't make any sense, folks. That's fleecing us. The government punishes hardworking Texans to sacrifice endeavor to provide good life for their families and to improve their standard of living. Just because I have a nice house, a nice neighborhood, does not mean I have more money. It means I value a good place to live and put my family. Okay? Property tax amounts increase while working class Texas income, buying power is stagnant or even decreasing with, with what do we got? Inflation right now. We got everything's tripled the price. And now we're going to, and now we're talking about property taxes, and your value of your house went up. So now you got to pay more of that, taking more of the money that I earn. The cost of living for general laborers, and I'm talking about the city workers, folks. I'm talking about the city workers, police officers, firefighters, school teachers. You know, these guys are paying 100% of their property taxes. Most of them are paying 100% on their property taxes. Those are the people that I talk about when I talk about general labors and the EMS is drastically increasing, reducing the quality of life for many hardworking Americans. Texas government has constantly told Texas property owners that their government is addressing the property tax relief. Yeah, we all see how that's going to work out. We've seen that legislation come through. They address it by increasing homestead exemption, which is possibly a disaster for cities and counties. I'm not sure how that's going to work out. I've got to look into that more. But if that homestead exemption applies across the board, they've just defunded the cities and municipalities and counties by giving everybody tax relief. That's wonderful. Additionally, politicians proudly boast of how they decreased rates. Decreasing my rate doesn't do anything for me if my, if my mount keeps on going up every year. Okay? I understand that such services and trust, infrastructure costs more, they cost more in nicer areas. You get what you pay for. But there's folks, unfortunately, we're next to Fort Hood, so there's folks who ain't paying anything. And they're getting a lot more than they're paying for. The rest of us are flipping the bill. Police officers, firefighters, city workers, they're flipping the bill. Low income flipping the bill. Small business owners flipping the bill. Texas must develop a system unrelated to property taxes, property values, which would be more objective. My consideration is that they would be attached the, the original square footage of the house. And you attach it, and you have a minimum property tax, and you have a maximum property tax. So everybody's going to pay into the system so that we can afford the quality of police, police and firefighters and EMS that we, that we want and that we have. And the laborer, the utility workers, people keeping my, my plumbing going, people keeping that clean water coming to my house, people keeping the electricity going, those are the people that are out there paying these property taxes as well because they live in the city. So, I propose that we look at, this isn't something for you, this is something for the county that has to work out, that the property taxes are based on square footage of the house, no exemptions, none, zero zilch. The only thing exemption would be for low income, according to the IRS and the federal government, those making under maybe 30,000, 40,000. They may get exemptions, but they're still going to pay 600. And commercial properties, it's, for this would be like a dollar per square foot, minimum 600, max 3,000. So you want to build a Taj Mahal? Go ahead. Go ahead, build your Taj Mahal. You're going to max out at 3,000. Businesses, 30 cents on the square foot. Because why? Because they employ people. They pay other taxes. They pay other property taxes. They bring business and money into the community. So businesses, of course, shouldn't have to pay more on property taxes. So every property owner should be paying property taxes regardless of status. Any reduction should be based solely on the household income. All household monies received include disability, housing, food, everything's income, right? I remember when I was in the Army. I didn't realize this, but now that I, as, as I grew up and figured out what I was doing, I was like, wait a second. I'm, not only am I getting paid extra for my housing, I can, I can deduct the interest on my, on my taxes too. I'm double dipping there. I'm double dipping. It's legit. But I was essentially double dipping. I was getting paid by the government extra for my house, and on top of that, I can declare my interest on my taxes? Oh, cool. That's wrong. Okay? And when you, and when you find out what you've been doing is wrong, you repent. You repent, and you try to make it right. We must end the current property tax shakedown and create a system completely independent of property values. Stop taxing unrealized gains because that's what they're doing. If you look at the people who are losing their homes in Austin, who's losing their homes? Low income people who can no longer afford to live there. Who are they losing their homes to? Developers. That's wrong, folks. That's called oppressing the poor. That's what that's called. It's called taking advantage and oppressing the poor. And that's wrong. Thanks.
I will say those are comments that are more properly directed towards state legislature.
They will be, and they have been.
Okay.
I got, I got.
Okay.
Practice it here.
All right. Anybody else to speak during Citizens Forum? All right, we will move to item F, Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. F1, Consideration and Action on Approval of City Council Workshop Meeting Minutes for July 6, 2023, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. F2, Consideration and Action on Approval of the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes for July 6, 2023, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. F3, Consideration and Action on Granting Council Member Sean Alzona an Excused Absence, Sean Alzona, Place 3.
Counsel, is there any item you wish to pull and consider separately from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items F1 through F3 as presented.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Alzona, seconded by Mr. Chavez. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. There are no items under public carrying, so we'll move to item H, Action Items.
H1, Consideration and Action on Awarding a Bid and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract with HCS Incorporated Commercial General Contractor for the Award of Bid Number PW 2023-04-82, Construction of Pre-Engineered Metal Storage Building Project, Scott Osborne, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. Would you have a bid before you deny it? This project was originally listed in 2022/2026 Capital Improvement Plan and was funded with the fiscal year 22 operating budget. This project basically consists of installing a new storage building at the Taylor Mountain Water Distribution Hub. Currently, and for the last 40 years, we've basically used a freight liner trailer for storage of parts, et cetera, and really had no place to, to store spare materials such as pipe, which are subject to the weather as they sit out in the sun. We believe that this project, it'll be a 60 by 35-foot building, will provide us an area as kind of a workshop and also a storage building for all the fittings, the, the valves and pipes, et cetera, and it'll really give us that functionality and protect those materials from the elements. With that, we did go out for bids, May 26th and June 2nd, received bids on June 20th, 2023, and we received two bids. Bid tabulation has been included in your package tonight. The lowest responsible bidder came in at 145,300. City staff does recommend award to HCS Incorporated Commercial General Contractor, so we can move forward with this project. I'll address any questions you do have. I'll address any questions you do have.
Counsel, you have any questions for Mr. Osborne? All right, thank you, Scott. Any action to be taken on item H1?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we award bid number PW 2023-4-82 to HCS Incorporated Commercial General Contractor in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract effectuating the same.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Chavez, seconded by Ms. Cortland. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to item H2.
Consideration and action on selecting Elements Architecture as the most qualified applicant to provide professional service in the site selection, design, planning, and construction oversight of a new senior center. Jeff Stoddard, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Request for qualifications, number 2023-03-50, was posted and advertised on March 24th and March 31st, 2023. Staff received ten statements of qualification. I'll forego reading all ten firms. City staff evaluated the ten statements of qualifications in the areas of experience, capacity, methodology, task understanding, and references. Elements of Architecture Incorporated received the highest score. Elements of Architecture Incorporated submitted a proposal of fifteen thousand, eight hundred for program and schematic design fees and seven to nine percent of construction costs for the architectural and engineering fees for the remainder of the project. City staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Elements of Architecture Incorporated to complete site selection, design, planning, and construction oversight of a new senior center.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Stoddard? Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Is there action to be taken on item H2?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Elements of Architecture Inc. to complete site selection, design, planning, and construction oversight of a new senior center.
Second.
Do we need to put the dollar amount? Can you add the dollar amount down below there, fifty-seven thousand, four seventy-seven?
Oh, sorry. In the amount of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars?
Mayor?
Yes.
The, the amount is actually fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. The, yeah, the fifty-seven thousand is what's available.
The fifteen is what's, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So the motion is amended to approve the amount at fifteen thousand, eight hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Second on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment say aye?
Aye.
All right. Move to the main item. All those in favor of approving the contract with Elements of Architecture, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We move to item H3.
Consideration and action on authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the operation of consent concessions at the Hills of Cove Golf Course. Jeff Stoddard, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Ashley. So currently, the Hills of Cove Golf Course does not have a concession provider. The previous one submitted their termination some time ago. In May of 2023, staff prepared a request for proposal for concessions at the Hills of Cove Golf Course. We received one request, or, or, excuse me, one proposal. That was from Herb and Ernie's LLC. The owners of Herb and Ernie's are here present in the audience tonight, Mr. Andy Remedies and Ms. Bettina Cash, if you have any questions for them. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager entering a contract with Herb and Ernie's LLC for concessions operations at the Hills of Cove Golf Course.
Thank you, Jeff. Counsel, any questions specific? All right. Is there a motion to approve item H3?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the city manager be allowed to enter into a contract with Herb and Ernie's LLC for concession operations at the Hills of Cove Golf Course.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Montanaz, seconded by Ms. Hart, I believe. Discussion. Do you have a comment?
Mayor? Yeah, I, I just received one question. It's, it's for the business, and it is, are y'all gonna serve fries? Yeah, yeah, good. See, there, there you go.
It's an important question, you know that.
All right. Well, with that, everybody's got dinner on the mind. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm free to be consulted on the menu if you really like.
I'll sacrifice. Beta tester. Yeah. Item H4.
Oh, I, oh.
I'm sorry.
I'm, no, I'm sorry. I just had a comment if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sure.
I just wanna thank you all. I know you're about to. I just wanna thank you both, and let, I just want it to be recognized, they're also the owners of the Cove Theater, and also, of course, Herb and Ernie's, and it's just been a phenomenal thing for our community, so just thank you. For just.
All right, we move to item H4.
Consideration and action on declaring personal property of the city. Eight hundred MHC mobile and portable radios as surplus property and directing proper disposal. Gary Young, Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, city manager. Coming for you tonight to, it's gonna be kind of a status update, because we're moving along with our update of our eight hundred megahertz radio system. With the implementation of that, which was approved previously by city council last year, we will end up having pieces and parts of our radio system that'll no longer be valuable to the city. They won't work with the new radio system. So I'm coming for you tonight to go ahead to seek the approval, to be able to dispose of that property when the time comes, when the new system is up and running, which we figure it will be up and running probably in a couple of months. And then the item that follows this ties right in with it.
All right, Counsel, do you have any questions for Chief Young? All right, so this action needs to be taken first, and then we can consider item H5. Is there's a motion to approve item H4?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that the city council declare all eight hundred megahertz radios with accompanying cables, chargers, accessories, not Project 25 Phase 2 compliant, to be surplus and may be disposed of by the best means possible, by auction, trade-in, or discard.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Cortland, seconded by Mr. Chavez. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to item H5.
Consideration and action to authorize the purchase of Project 25 radio system equipment and the trade-in of surplus radio equipment. Gary Young, Fire Chief.
As I had stated, we're moving forward with the completion of the implementation of a Project 25 Phase 2 radio system. With that implementation, we have previously had funds budgeted in our capital operating plan, COP. We've been sitting on those funds, intending to bring them together once this system came forward. Obviously, with the pandemic that we had, there was, there's been a lot of things that have moved very slowly. The radio system implementation was one of those. So now we're here. We actually have quite a bit of the radio equipment that is actually on city property. It has been installed, it's got power going to it, however, it's not in the transmit mode. That operation will begin next week. So the final phase of putting this together was to address and take a look at all of the Project 16 radio equipment that we have had, and were either upgraded, if possible, which some of it can be, and if not possible, to replace it. So we've got COP funds that are in place to be able to do this from several different accounts, and this has been an ongoing project where we had identified that the end of the life of a radio would, would be a certain period of years, and we would replace it. And we've stretched that just a little bit, knowing that this was coming, so we could do this final push to get everything up and running and squared away. So these are the final things that we have identified that we need to purchase to make this system full, complete, whole, and ready to roll.
All right. Questions for Chief Young?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you explain the difference between a Project 25 Phase 2 system and the old Project 16 system? The main ones are fine.
In, in layman's terms, I, I would equate it similar to computer operating systems, where I think we're on Windows 11 now, and XP was something we used many, many years ago. Over a period of time, the standards in radios change. The radio system that we bought twenty years ago was a Project 16 system at the time. I would equate that to like Windows NT or XP as far as, you know, kind of technology. And so today, the interoperable standard of radios that was created was called Project 25. That was, that really gained a lot of ground after September, the 11th, 2001, when all the responders weren't able to talk. And so a nationwide movement was pushed in to say, hey, we really need to get something so that when we all come together, we can all work together and be able to communicate. So have I answered your question with my response? Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Counsel, action to be taken on item H5.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the city manager to purchase eight hundred megahertz Project 25 Phase 2 radios, accessories, software upgrades, and encryption software in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-two cents, and authorize a trade-in of surplus property to Daily and Wells Communications.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Chavez, seconded by Mr. Montanaz, is that right? Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. We now move to item I, reports from staff outside entities, advisory committees, and boards.
City manager report. Ryan Haverlau, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Osborne. Mayor and Council, go through these projects again. If you have any questions, concerns, please stop me, otherwise I'll continue going through them at, at a fairly quick pace. US Business 190, Techside has notified the city that the contractor is completing punchless items. They have recently completed cleanup of the landscape area. They have it, a list from the city, which includes cleaning up the roadway from debris that is on the roadway left from the construction. And my understanding from Techside is they are continuing to work with the contractor on completing the project very quickly. There is a portion of the project which includes the turnaround at Constitution and Business US 190. That currently has a yellow stripe over the turn lane, which means you should not be in that area to make a U-turn. We are continuing to talk with Techside to remedy that, which will require a new mast for the light, to include a light for that turn lane. FM 116 State Highway 9 overpass, that project is continuing on schedule. Veterans Avenue sidewalk project, all construction work on that project has essentially stopped because the contractor has legally abandoned the project. We are working with the bid, the project insurance to complete that project, so you understand what next steps will come, is as we work with the insurance company, city council will eventually receive an action item to approve a new contractor to complete that work, and we are trying to push the work on an emergency basis. However, because of the simple legal process that we have to go through, it is likely that the project will not be fully complete by the time school starts this August. So that you're aware, and our residents are aware, that is what we're going through, but we are maintaining contact and pushing to get this done as quickly as possible. Constitution Drive Reconstruction Project has started. If you go by there, you see that there has been quite a bit excavated from the existing roadway, and that was the whole plan, to remove what was there, correct the base under that road, and then we will pour a new roadway. That project has three phases. The current phase is under construction, and then phases two and three are the remaining portions, one side of the roadway, east side of the roadway, or the west side of the roadway, and then we'll switch to the other side. Again, that is anticipated to be a nine-month project, once that began. Rattlesnake tank, elevated storage tank. City council took action to authorize us to purchase new pumps for that tank site. The order for those pumps has been placed. It is a lengthy time period, and so that was in the agenda item that city council approved. Emergency generators, we have bid out that project, and we will be receiving bids in the next couple of weeks. City park restrooms, this project is complete. The reason I left this on here is because several weeks ago, we actually had restrooms vandalized and damaged. The commode in one of the restrooms was first broken, and then the next day actually fully destroyed. And so I, I report on this item because we eventually identified the individuals that were involved in the vandalism of that restroom, and we are prosecuting those individuals to the fullest extent of the law. So it is a new asset for our community, a replacement of an old asset that's probably forty or more years old. They are very functional and very appealing aesthetically compared to the previous ones. And so as residents of our city, we should take care of those things, because we all pay for it, even when they become vandalized. Animal control facility, we're continuing to work with the architect and the construction manager at risk to obtain construction quotes and bids for that facility. The initial pass of that exceeded the budget, and we are continuing to work with them to ensure that we come in within budget for that project. State Highway 9 to Business US 190 interchange project, we are in the middle of designing that project. We did, after a meeting with Techside representatives, add additional component to that project, which is lighting for that interchange. Techside recommended it, we agreed, and so we're proceeding with the addition of adding lighting for that interchange. And then the last item I have is legislative update. Last legislative update I provided was after the regular session ended with the state legislature. The first special session came and went, special, the second special session was called, and last week, the state legislature approved the second special session, Senate Bill Number Two. And that will then go to the governor for approval. This is called the Property Tax Relief Act. This bill will increase the property tax exemption for school district resident homesteads from forty thousand to one hundred thousand dollars. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through all of the, the major parts of this bill that particularly deal with cities. It will also prohibit cities from adopting a local option that reduces the amount of the current exemption that a governing body has approved or provides. So Copper's Cove does provide homestead exemption in that we are prohibited from reducing that amount. The second item imposes a twenty percent appraisal cap for all real property under five million dollars. The second item imposes a 20% appraisal cap for all real property under $5 million other than a residence homestead through December of 2026. It also provides that appraisal district in a county with a population of 75,000 or more, which is Coriol County, which is Bell County, it will establish a nine-member Board of Directors, five of whom are appointed by the taxing units, and so this governing body every two years, or three years, I think it's every three years, appoints and votes on members to the appraisal district's Board of Directors. Five of those are appointed, and three are elected at large in that county, and one serves as the ex-officio director, who is the county assessor collector. Hope that wasn't too confusing. So basically, five are appointed by the taxing units, three are elected, and one is an ex-officio, which is the tax assessor collector in the county. Three at large. Yes, sir. Let's see, the next one states that these changes are effective with the 2023 tax year, which is this year. And six is oh, that, that we're still required to calculate the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate, which is also effective this tax year. And this tax year is when the appraisal districts calculate the tax, but is effective for next year is when we would actually receive that tax. Okay. Any questions about that legislative bill that was passed?
Questions?
And I did receive a question on legislation about 100% exemption, and that is basically 100% exemption for residential properties is only applicable to 100% disabled veterans who file for the 100% exemption, and it's 100% exemption from all property taxes. Mayor, that concludes my report, and I'll take any questions council has.
Any? Okay. Item J, items for future agendas. Ms. Cortland?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing, sir. Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Okay. All right. There is no executive session for tonight, so the time is 6:39. We stand adjourned.